Hi, Nan.
It's good, aren't you?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to comply of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, in this world with the best human justice for all.
Do you have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meeting held February 10th, 2020?
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Nobody signed up to address the board yet. Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Onto the Good News Report, Dan.
Well, if you recall, about a month ago, I kind of gave you a synopsis of many things that were in action and some coming our way as well. And one of those we're going to feature here tonight. Recognizing and attempting to write your name using scissors, catching a ball, all of those things are probably things parents of four-year-olds who will soon be five-year-olds are likely assessing to see, is my child ready for kindergarten? Or do they need another year? That seems to be the age-old question of parents with children that age. So Elizabeth J. Hengary from our Early Childhood Department is going to share with us tonight an opportunity for families to learn more about what's required of kindergarten and how to decide if their child is actually ready to attend. So we'll have Elizabeth here to tell us more.
Good evening. Thank you. So next Thursday, March 5th, at Pettigrew Elementary, starting at 5:45 to 7:00, we will have our annual kickoff to kindergarten event. We're very excited. We have a wonderful lineup set up for this year. We will start with a general session where Mr. Dick and a kindergarten teacher will start talking about, you know, basic things that families need to start planning for as their children get ready for kindergarten. Basic routines within the home, some expectations that kindergarten teachers in the school will have. And then at, starting at...
6:45?
I'm sorry, 6:15. Excuse me. Breakout sessions will begin at 6:15 and we have three breakout sessions. One will stay right in the auditorium where we have the general session and that will be a Q and A with the principal and the kindergarten teacher. This will provide an opportunity for families that want to ask more in-depth questions. A lot of times they pertain to the curriculum, start and end times, class size, you know, more intimate questions related to the actual school. Another session that we're excited about this year is one about the effects of screen time on brain development. We have got a behavior therapist from Avera coming in to talk about what that looks like and the gray matter and how that affects children's brain development through the years. With that, they will also be presenting and talking about fun things that they, that you can do with your child in lieu of just always screen time. And then lastly, tends to be one of our, our most well-attended session will be that kindergarten readiness. Our early childhood behavior therapist and one of our early childhood coordinators will be there. They will talk about all the school readiness related to that reading, writing, math, basics, social emotional development. Another hot topic is behavior and how parents can start to prepare their child. Again, establishing those routines and just providing some of that basic information for families to move forward in the coming months. And another thing we're really excited about is the informational booths. We have 11 signed up so far this year. Last year, we really beefed it up and added quite, quite a few from outside in, with the community and we're really excited. One new one is the Sioux Falls Hunger, which is based out of the Faith Temple Food Project giveaway. They're looking to partner with us. We're really excited to get them in there. And then also Sanford Fit. She will have a booth that will have information that will talk about different things that families and parents and children can do to keep themselves active and engaged. So we're really, really excited for this year. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Elizabeth. Thank you. How are we reaching out to families who are maybe new to Sioux Falls or new to the district?
So we have this posted on our website and we've also sent out calls. And so they know if they call into the screen office, they're provided the information as well as they can register online.
And I love that you added the junior kindergarten, especially if, you know, the screening is not maybe where they feel like they're ready to go. They can look at the junior kindergarten.
Absolutely. And junior kindergarten definitely will be on some of the, for the registration piece, we had any questions that they wanted us to start thinking about or that they're thinking about. So we're prepared for that one because there's a couple on there that, how do I know if my child is ready? So I think that, and they will have a booth there too. So that'll be good.
Sounds like a great event.
Yeah. It's, it's, we have over 200 registered for this year, so, so far.
And I did notice on your last slide that it said childcare was available. So that's great. An obstacle that the parents don't have to overcome to try to find a way to...
Yep. On our flyer, we have that printed right on there because we realize that's important and we'll provide a snack and a drink, juice or milk for those kiddos too, by the parents. Well, because parents are nervous and they, they tend to just have a lot of anxiety and a lot of, you know, it's an unknown territory for a lot of our families. So we want them to be able to focus and relax and ask those questions that they need answers to.
I remember attending this a long time ago when my oldest, well, now he's 15, so that tells you how long ago that was. But it, it really does ease the minds of parents and to, and just to be able to ask the questions that they need to ask. And it was a great event now and I know you beefed it up quite a bit from, from even then, but even then it was very informational and very helpful. So it really does ease the parents' minds as they start thinking about kindergarten and whether their kids are ready. And so thank you very much for putting that on.
Well, thank you.
I should clarify, this isn't just for kindergarteners who would potentially go to Pettigrew. This is for...
This is for tired just...
Anybody in the Sioux Falls area that...
Yep. We've moved it around. It was at Hayward for a number of years and then it's been at Terry Redlin for a number of years. And again, just feedback from families, one of the biggest feedbacks from Terry Redlin was the parking, which I know we've, we've solved a little bit in the last year, but...
Good.
So we just thought, give another part of town the opportunity and then another site also to represent their school. They, the principals are great about it. They're, they're wonderful. Great partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There were no new conflicts of interest presented. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, items 8A through 8. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same, same sign. Motion carries. Onto the supplemental consent agenda, item 9A, Claims to Sanford Health. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. 9B, Claims to Avera Healthcare. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries with one abstention from Board Member Tom Parker. Onto reports to the superintendent.
Thank you. We have three reports from the superintendent tonight. The first report is a dual immersion report. As you know, dual immersion is in its first year, in its infancy in the district. Here to give you an update on how we're progressing with that program is Ann Smith.
Good evening. Good evening. With the district's commitment to providing a rigorous, effective and engaging curriculum and instruction for all students, particularly with literacy in the early years and differentiated and engaging pathways and equitable access to highly effective programs, we initiated a dual immersion pilot this year with two sections of kindergarten at Rosa Parks Elementary and two sections of kindergarten at Hayward Elementary. Those classes will be advancing to first grade in 20, next fall. And then we'll be initiating two more sections of kindergarten at each of those schools in the fall. In the dual immersion model, our students are involved with Spanish and English instruction every day. Each classroom is made up of a mix of Spanish and English-speaking students. So this is a sample schedule, just to get, give you a feel of what it looks like in that kindergarten classroom. You start out, you may start out in the morning in the Spanish classroom so that your morning meeting is in Spanish. And then your literacy instruction, that's making meaning, being a writer, is in Spanish. And then you might go to a special. And then you might come back and you're still, section KO3 is in the Spanish classroom and Benchmark is their Spanish language arts instruction. Then we go to Ressess and our classes flip. So now the class that was in the morning, having their morning meeting in English and math and English and then going to a special and then doing shared reading, being a reader in English, they're now coming over and going into the Spanish classroom to continuing on with being a writer and their benchmark Spanish language arts. Then there's Ressess and then Science, Social Studies, and that looks kind of ambiguous there. That's because we decide whether it's going to be Spanish or English depending on the unit that they're teaching because some things work better in English. And especially when you get into Social Studies, there are some things that better work in English, some things that work better in Spanish. And we just make those decisions based on what we're teaching. And then finally dismissal. So it has, it has been a, a learning experience, but so far the teachers are feeling fairly satisfied with how they've arrived at a schedule that works. One of the things that has worked very nicely is the ability to collaborate, both between Hayward and Rosa Parks and with the teachers at Sonia Sotomayor. So they're not just in this on their own. They have the benefit of learning from those kindergarten teachers at Sonia, who have been a great help. To further that collaboration, we're going to bring all of the kindergarteners together on April 23rd for St. George's Day, which is a traditional holiday in Spain. You might notice the picture. You've got a young lady with a rose and a knight with a book. One of the traditions of St. George's Day is that the boys give the girls a rose and the girls give the boys a book. And it all ties into the history of the holiday, which we won't go into right now. But anyway, it sounds like it's going to be a fun day to bring all those kids together for that opportunity. The goal for our dual immersion program is to have, by the end of fifth grade, all of those students at the same language proficiency level so that they can come together at middle school and then continue on in the Spanish immersion program. At middle school, it's three classes in Spanish. And then when they get into high school, currently we have one class for them, although we are working and being able to provide two every year in their high school years. So far, the parent feedback has been very positive. Much of the feedback will be familiar to parents who've come through the Sonia Sotomayor program. How do I help my child at home? What does this look like next year? But parents are saying they're excited and eager to enroll their younger child. Some are even saying, expressing that they're frustrated that they didn't have an opportunity for their older children since this has started with kindergarten. But on both sides, both from families whose native language is English and families whose native language is Spanish, they're saying it's just really rewarding to hear those young ones using both languages at home unprompted. They will just spontaneously use the other language. So currently, we have 43 enrolled at Hayward and 48 enrolled at Rosa Parks. And the applications are starting to come in. Rosa Parks, 26 so far, and 14 at Hayward. We know that kindergarten enrollment is always just a little slow, parents figuring all that out. So we expect those applications will start speeding up and we are planning to have information nights in March to help raise awareness of what's coming. When you look at costs for the, for the program, since these are, there is no real additional costs other than needing to purchase one set of curriculum materials. And then we have invested a little bit of money for library books at both schools to be sure that we can keep building up those libraries for the independent reading. And with that, I would recommend that you acknowledge the dual immersion program update and I stand by for questions.
The question I thought of while you were doing that is, I know that a lot of people did not get into Sonia Sotomayor in that process. Do we reach out then to them to what, okay?
Yes, we do. Actually, the email that was sent to them saying that they did not get included the information for who to contact if they were interested in the dual immersion program.
Perfect.
And we have had many of those families reach out to either principal sheets or principal hot chats.
What are some of the activities? I just met the numbers of Spanish students, speaking students, because obviously that's an important piece of getting that, those Spanish-speaking students into the class too. So Hayward looks like they're more 50/50 where Rosa Parks, and I know it's early, but are we doing any activities to try to reach out to that Hispanic population to let them know about this option?
Yes, yes. And so the parent nights that we'll be having will be advertised in both Spanish and English and we'll have interpreters there if they're, if necessary. You know, one of the things that I, I kind of didn't mention in the report, but one of the things that we're learning as we go through this, we talk about, we have students who are Spanish-speaking students and students who are English-speaking students and it sounds kind of like it's a binary, this or this. It's really much more a spectrum. And so most, most of our kindergarten children for whom Spanish is a dominant language, they really already speaking some English. They already have some English. It's just that they also know Spanish and then there's varying degrees of their ability to produce that. So yes, we are reaching out to the Spanish families. And it's not necessarily as mu, as much, the language isn't as much of a barrier with those families as you might think it would be.
What I love about this is that, you know, parent involvement, as we all know, if that helps increase the child's success and that this allows another group of parents to be involved with their students and so forth. So I just, I'm, I'm hopeful for the success of this program because it opens up other specialized programs in our district. And I hope it grows so that then the merger, we can look at, you know, where is this new middle school for the Spanish? There would be two sites. Is it going to be multiple buildings? So we don't have the issue so much of looking right now at the boundaries if it's going to be...
Just the spread.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And research supports these students that where English isn't their native language, they acquire English much quicker. They're also able to learn how to read and write in their native language. So thanks to the school district for giving it a try, looking at what the research has to say, looking at our local resources, the ability to get involved in the classroom and the difference that we're all able to make in the life of a child. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you have a motion to approve the dual immersion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ann.
The second of our three reports tonight is a report on Thomas Jefferson High School and Ben Rifle Middle School regarding their mascots and their colors. This is an item that a lot of people are very interested in. So here to deliver that information tonight is Casey Miley.
Is that Jefferson green on this?
I think so.
It's close.
Came in uniform.
My bag is so old though. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Casey Miley. I'm the coordinator of athletics and PE in the district. And tonight I have the honor of showing you for the first time the school colors and the marks at Thomas Jefferson High School and Ben Rifle Middle School. Obviously, the purpose is to give the opportunity for you guys to view it for the first time. And as you guys are aware, last spring, we set out with the superintendent's student forum, which is comprised of 16 high school students at, four at Lincoln, four at Washington, four at Roosevelt and four at New Tech. They all came together and they decided on the marks and the mascots and the school colors that are going to be presented to you tonight. The first one that they chose was for Thomas Jefferson and they chose the Cavaliers. And their rationale behind that was Thomas Jefferson in 1819, the 76-year-old Thomas Jefferson founded the University of Virginia. He organized the state legislative campaign for, for its charter and with assistance of Edmund Bacon, purchased the location. He was the principal, designer of the buildings, planned the university's curriculum and served as the founder, the...
First director.
Upon its opening in 1823, the University of Virginia's mascot and nickname is the Cavaliers. Some of the key elements to the design of this logo is its simplified style for versatility across mediums, sharp shapes to convey competitiveness and fierceness and abstract press to evoke education. The next part of the presentation is a branding guide and this is to provide a powerful identity for our students to create school pride for our teachers, parents and the Sioux Falls community. And you'll see four marks on here. One is the primary athletics logo, which has the logo and the words with it. The secondary athletics logo that can be used. And then alternative logos for Thomas Jefferson High School. Also included in the branding guide are the colors, the exact PMS locations that they have so that it's consistent brand throughout, throughout everything that we do at Thomas Jefferson High School as long as the typography that is listed there in that brand. One thing that I should preface is, this is all original content. So it will protect Thomas Jefferson and Ben Rifle from copyright infringement moving forward. So that helps. And then this next slide will give you a little idea of what it would look like, gear, helmets or championship banners that are at Thomas Jefferson High School. Next up is Ben Rifle. Ben Rifle was born on the Rosebed Reservation, a member of the Sioux tribe and a Lakota congressman. He believed in his solid education, promoted South Dakota and proudly displayed his Lakota heritage throughout his career. To honor his background, it seems appropriate to incorporate symbols and colors of Lakota culture. Some key elements of this mark, simple shapes for versatility and legibility, sharp lines to tie into Native American patterns and facing forward to the future. The Ben Rifle Middle School brand guide. There's the primary and secondary logos that are offered at Ben Rifle. As you can see, the yellow and the red are traditional to Lakota heritage. And that is why the students chose and a little bit of their rationale behind the colors that were chosen with the Ben Rifle logo. There's the icon and then the word mark for Ben Rifle Middle School. And then finally, the colors that were chosen so we can stay consistent throughout. And then the typography. Any questions for me?
When do you go to print?
As soon as you guys approve.
And Jeff can get it on all the buildings.
Yeah. No, I think it's exciting and I think it's something that will be a community builder and people have spirit wear. I think it builds that camaraderie and that community. And so I'm excited to get started on getting stuff printed for the future students and families of both of these schools to be able to have something to identify with. So very, very nice job to you and the students that helped you out too.
They're great.
When can we get the polos?
You want some polos? Can we get them printed?
As soon as we approve them, Todd.
I can, I can get into a small, Casey, but I'd like to wear a triple X on sleeve length.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Exciting.
Do you have a motion to approve the Thomas Jefferson High School and Ben Rifle Middle School mascot and school colors?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Well, equally as fun, we'll move to the next report, which is the legislative update. Todd Veek will talk to us about. This is certainly important and I don't want to dismiss the significance.
I think Todd's just happy the, the gold and the, the green and gold is not quite as gold as another green and gold team, right?
We had a lot of discussions with him.
Apparently nobody told Casey to leave it like he found it.
He must not have been a Boy Scout.
Maybe just for the college of the board, I want you to know as Deanne works to help Todd out there, we're going to have some really interesting conversations around the office tomorrow as to how Deanne bailed Todd out.
I came in here early and got my stuff set up and...
I thought it would wait till tomorrow. It sounds like it'll be tonight.
Sounds like a little stress here.
Where are we going? Be self-conscious. That's good. Thanks. Leave it like it is.
No.
Exactly like it is. Thanks. It's exactly the way I had it planned when I got up here. Just leave it. Thank you.
He wants us to be not... I was hoping so. A lot of people to see it.
Yeah, thanks. Before we get into this, I want to just talk a little bit about some of our key bills and where they stand right now. Obviously, we spent the prior month going through and analyzing the bills and talking about our positions on that and getting approval from the board on those. So of the key bills, most of them are opposed. There are several of them have died. 1134 had to do with the graduation ceremony. 1162 had to do with sex ed. 1163 had to do with web postings of student surveys. 1173 was automatic open enrollment for autistic students. Senate Bill 88 had to do with parental notification for some revelations that came about in counseling. Senate Bill 111 had to do with wind energy exclusions for state aid. Senate Bill 168 were some other exclusions, not quite as heavy for state aid. House Bill, just happened today, House Bill 1104, having to do with athletic physicals and the information that could be required for participation sports that died as well. And House Bill 1167 had to do with confidential communications between students and counselors that died today as well. Bills that are still out there, 1218 is another parental notification bill for certain tests that's still alive. 1235 has to do with whether or not you can require immunizations. That's up tomorrow in Health Human Services. Couple of new positions. Senate Bill 170 was the governor's bill on Capitol Alley. We didn't, we didn't, we originally didn't support it because it wasn't strong enough, we thought. There's a, there was a compromise on it. It's been amended essentially for us. It's been amended for all three groups that kind of had issues for us. It would change 3% inflation, whichever is less, to 3% plus new construction. So we are recommending supporting that bill and making it key. Senate Bill 94 was the bill which had originally come out of the, the different education groups. That has been withdrawn because of this, so that is no longer a key bill for us. That has been withdrawn because of this, so that is no longer a key bill for us. And then we have a new position on 1198. We had supported that, but it's been amended. It's another capital LA bill. It's been amended now so that it allows for capital LA opt-outs. We were saying no position on that. We like the governor's amended bill, the Senate Bill 170. So those are, that's kind of where we stand right now with key bills. Most of the key bills have died. These are the few that are left. And then kind of in preparing for tonight, it's like there's some placeholder bills, but we really haven't talked much about education funding and where, you know, 2% inflation, whichever is, well, it'd be 2% or the 0% is proposed by the governor. This little tiny little document I have right here was sent to me. Not, it wasn't this size, but was originally sent to me by Board Member Mickelson, and I looked it over and I see it's out there on the web. You know, I found it out there, and I want to talk just a little bit about this. So I kind of want to, so this is what it looks like in its entirety, and that's why it's so small for Deanne. I'm going to go through this and kind of dispel some myths hopefully and just kind of get our position where we think we should be. One thing, before we get into too much into it, I'm going to say that when, in 2016, you know, and Dr. Maher was on that Blue Ribbon Committee and the bills, a couple of bills came forward. The key one passed fairly overwhelmingly. It was 55 to 12 in the House and 25 to 10 in the Senate. It was Senate Bill 131. We'd kind of said, yeah, this is good, but this isn't just do this and then let's go back to the way it has been for the prior 15, 16, 17 years that led to that bill having to come in and the half-cent sales tax increasing. And I fear we've gotten kind of back to the old habits of the old days, which led to the eventual need for the half-cent sales tax. So we'll just go through it and I'll, we'll talk a little bit about where we're at. So this is that funding, this is part of that funding, that state funding snapshot. And the yellow items here are items that are true, but kind of questionable or kind of misleading. And we'll get down to here. The items that are red are items that are inaccurate. And we'll go through that. We'll go through these one by one. So they, in this, used NEA as their source, and that's down here. NEA has more up-to-date data than the Census Bureau and NCES. It's an estimate, and it's one year newer. And when the Blue Ribbon Task Force was meeting, the state had a consultant who used NEA data, and it was very close to what you see on here. And one of the members of the task force asked, well, is there other information out there? And is there better information? And it's, yes, the census is more accurate, but it's a year older. Now, so the NEA is an estimate, and it's quite a bit off. So like, they have us at South Dakota at 32nd in funding per student. The Census Bureau has us at 40th. And that's typically where South Dakota has been over the years, and that is the number that is the more accurate info. It's just a 2017 data instead of 2018. And I guess you pay for the recency by, with accuracy because this is the figure, and it's fairly, it's consistent. Spending per student, they're both fairly close. The Census has us at 38. And NCES, which is where we get the teacher salaries, if you go back to FY17, they have us at 48, fairly close to that number. But this is kind of the key one. The revenue per student is more like 40th. I would add on that that... So when you see that data, kind of even the revised data, you know, you say 40th, and we're 40th in teacher salaries. Why? It's because we're very sparse. If you take out, you know, if you take out federal land and you take out state land, owned land in all the states, we are more sparse than Alaska. The only state that is more sparse than us is North Dakota. And so our neighbors are kind of in the same boat as us, especially our neighbors to the south and to the west. Not quite as much Iowa and Minnesota. But of all our neighbors, we are the, by far, the lowest in revenues per student. We're 40th. Montana's 34th. Nebraska's 23rd. North Dakota's 15th, to give you, to give you an example. And Wyoming is 6th. Our Iowa and, you know, Minnesota, I don't have the Minnesota number on here, but Iowa is a little, is not quite as sparse. They're 25th in revenue per student. So that's one thing to look at on that. When you get down and look at this, this is the year of the half-cent sales tax increase, and they had us at a 12% increase on this document. That includes the pension fund, which was eliminated from schools and rolled into the state aid formula. And I think it also includes the 20% getting in the way to the equalization of eventually all those other funds being rolled in. So the, the state at the time sent out to each school what your increase was, because the increase came with 85% of it had to be spent on improving teacher salaries and benefits. So the average increase, it was different for each district, but the average increase, according to that document, was 9.1%. It's a figure we've been using ever since this time. So this is a little bit high. So if you take that and you, you know, this, these increases here and you adjust for this 9.1%, the increase hasn't been 18%. It's been 1502. And so the, you know, the sentence here was that it's outpaced the inflation. A, it's not inflation. It's the index factor, which is 3% inflation, whichever is less. It isn't, sometimes we think, oh, it's inflation. Well, if inflation is four, we get three. And this hasn't even kept up with the index factor. It's slightly less than, not a big deal here, but it's certainly not more. And that's what this item here tends to represent. Then that brings to a question. Is this the right? This is the index factor. The state sets the index factor. It isn't a magical, magical calculation. It's, it's, back in 1995, they decided, well, the increase is going to be 3% inflation, whichever is less. And it's been in effect essentially since 1998. Some years you get more than that, some years less. But that language has always been in the statutes since the first full year in 1998. So let's just look. You know, there's been constitutional amendment that's come before the legislature in the past, limiting all the growth in state government to 3% inflation, whichever is less. And the commissioner of the Bureau of Finance at the time said, if you do that, we're going to be found unconstitutional for this, that. Well, schools have requirements too that we have to follow. Many of those are said, are told to us by the state. So let's just look. This compare not to the index factor as determined by the state, but what does the state, the state budget grow on? So this is hard to see because I've got it here in yellow up here and a yellow and white, but it's, it's the per capita increase in the rest of state general fund. So you pull out state aid, which is roughly a third of the state budget, the general fund budget. And I also took out the technical institutes, which is less than 1%. It's about 1%. And then you look at the rest of the state budget, and what has that grown over this time? And you can see it's grown on average. It includes the year of the cut, but it's a growing on average 34%. So more than double the per student increase. And this is per population or per capita. So we're trying to compare apples to apples here. So is this a fair comparison here anyway, even after you adjust it? Well, it's state not even keeping up to the rules it's set. And then this is compare it to what has the state grown compared to what it's allowed schools to grow over the period of time they picked, not us. This is their document. Now, it's not even half that increase. And then if you talk to legislators about this or people from state agencies, you'll hear, well, a lot of that's Medicaid. So we pulled out, we can pull out the Medicaid agencies, which are DSS and DHS. And that's got a lot more than Medicaid. It's got social programs and whatnot, but just pulling those out of there, it's still up 28%, almost double when you account for the big driver in the state budget pulling that out. So this, this document here was one kind of thing that was troubling to us. Another is kind of the tone of the conversation, especially here at the legislative coffees, about, oh, one other thing, yeah. I'm going to get into that in just a second. And it kind of goes to this. And this is in that document as well. Teacher salaries are decided at the local level, not by the state. That's true. You guys determine what the teacher salaries are going to be, and at all employees, what our salaries are going to be here in the school district. However, that's a little misleading because you guys don't determine what your, yeah. So, so if you look and you pull out the federal, and everybody knows the federal money is good to have, but we can't use it to, we say, we're going to wipe out Title I programs, and we're going to increase everybody's teacher salary by wiping out these programs. You can use the federal money to pay teachers, but you pay them what you pay all your other teachers. So they don't dictate, raise, or lower the salaries. You just use the federal money to pay federal, teachers working on federal programs, what all the other teachers make. So if you pull the federal money out, almost 85, or 85% of the non-federal general fund revenues come from the state aid formula. And then if you look at where the expenditures go, 82.7% of general fund expenditures are salaries and benefits. Now, that includes more than just teachers, but presumably you don't say, teachers are getting a 3% increase. Custodians, you get zero to fund the teacher's salaries and so on. So this includes all the groups, but as you know, as we've always talked about, most of our, most of our general fund expenditures are salaries and benefits. You know, you can work hard to cut the purchase services and the supplies and materials, but the big item that drives the budget is right here, salaries and benefits. So then on to the, you know, along that same vein, kind of the tone of the last few weeks of the, of... And it's kind of like a message that's concerted. It's kind of like, obviously, this came out. There's been folks up at the state, state officials saying items close to this, and then this actual, kind of an amalgamation of quotes here. We give schools plenty of money for higher teacher salaries. They spend it on other things, and then they always like to, like administration. So let's just look at that. According to the Census Bureau, that same data I just showed you a little more detail. We were 40th in per pupil revenues, we know that. 38th in per pupil spending. We were 36th in spending on administration. Say, oh, well, that's more. And we're 34th in spending on instruction. This is the state of South Dakota. So the concentration of spending is on instruction. You know, we're spending more on that than we're spending on average. We're spending a little bit more on administration. And that's not just administrators. That's clerical in the principal's office and whatnot. It's you guys as well. But, but it's, it's, it's less than we're, you know, we're spending more, we're higher ranked on our spending on instruction than we are anything else. And everything else is obviously less than 38th because to average 38th, it's got to be less than that. So that's where schools are spending. And then if we go back to 19, I talked about 1998 a little bit ago. That's the first full year that, that's when schools first had to live under the current per pupil funding formula. It's been revised a little bit. Now it's based on the teacher's, but it's all, it's all based on the number of students you have. So in 1998, way back then, the average teacher salary was $27,839. By FY11, 13 years later, the average salary was up 41%. Well, the per pupil increase was up 39.7. So if you think of that over 13 years, it was about a 10th of a percent a year difference in the two. And why? Because of that 85, 85 we just looked at. If one of those things goes up faster than the other, your budget's either going to, you're going to grow your fund balances or you're going to dip into your fund balances and go negative. They pretty much have to match each other. Well, then what happened in FY12? FY12, the formula was cut 8.6%. And it would have been virtually impossible to retain your workforce and reduce average salary by 8.6%. So they did drop a little, is probably through turnover. They dropped to 1.1% statewide. So between, so that was the year of the big cut. Between FY12 and FY16, average salaries increased 8.3% over that period of time, while the per pupil increase was 11.1. So that little slight not going up as fast was trying to work kind of your way back to that closer where they grew the same over the 13-year period, or close to the same. And then FY17 hit. The half-cent sales tax was passed. You know, the Blue Ribbon Task Force met, and there was that 9.1% increase, and schools were told 85% a year increase has to go to teacher salaries and benefits. And so what happened? It wasn't a 9.1% increase. It was 11.7. As schools, many schools overshot that mark, kind of to play it safe and try to get in the spirit of what, what was, the legislature was working toward. Since then, and it's only been a couple of years, average teacher salary is up 2.7, while the per pupil increase ongoing was up 1.3%. That doesn't include this year because we don't have the, this year it went up two and a half, but this year we don't have the average teacher salary. So we don't have FY20 into this mark. So going all the way back to 98 again, the average teacher salary has increased 73.2% in the state. While the increase in this per student amount has been 56.7. And that could be turned around and say, see, you guys can give more than we give you. Well, that's because of those two things. A, that huge cut, and then B, when the increase, which made up for the cut, they said, but most of this has to go to teacher salaries. So that's what has caused that. Not that that's a bad thing, but this change here is, comes at the expense of everything else. You know, we talked about our 1% efficiency, and we cut programs, and we do this and that. The other thing, it's to make, you know, part of that pays for this, this change. And it is just in Sioux Falls. It's across the, it's across the state. So our average teacher salary as of FY19, last year, was $48,204. If it had grown at the same rate going back to 1998 as state aid had grown, it would have been $43,613. So the notion that we, the state, give schools plenty of money, and they just spend it somewhere else is just absolutely 100% wrong. One last thing. I've been told that a comparison to the state budget and the per pupil amount isn't fair. I mean, it's been suggested that maybe there'd be a different way to look at it. There is another way. And since most of our general fund and the special ed fund, for that matter too, is spent on salaries and benefits, what should the per pupil increase be? I mean, what would be a good indicator for that? How about we look at the largest, we know we have to employ, employ people in the public sector. So how about we look at the largest public sector employee, and what do they do? What do they, what do they increase? So we took that last, oh, did I cut this off? I think I did. My mistake. Well, I've got the data, and it's not going to be able to show it to you. But, so we took the... I took the, that same chart we were looking at earlier. The same chart, and I plugged in instead of that per capita increase in the state budget, non-state aid, plugged in the state personal services, salaries and benefits per FTE over the same exact period of time. And like I said, I don't have this one on here, but the inflation at the bottom, you know, it's up and down and whatnot, but the inflation at the bottom is 30.5% over this period of time, twice that of what the per pupil increase has been in the state aid formula. That one might be actually the best thing to compare it to because that's what the state spends to employ its staff and schools since the state aid formula pretty much dictates what we can spend on our staff without cutting other things to pay for it. We're about half that rate. So anyway, that's our take, and hopefully we don't get a 0% increase. You know, they said they found some more money, and hopefully we'll get a bill in that we can actually look at and see what it looks like. But I'd stand by for questions.
First, thank you for that information. I appreciate it. When I saw this, the original posting, I was a little frustrated because my husband also served on the task force. And to not compare apples to apples and using the census data for the Blue Ribbon as their baseline, and then to use a different data to show that, you know, we were given more money, and now what are we doing? Is a false narrative. And to then basically put school boards against their teachers and to the legislators to use as another false narrative to go out and say, we're giving enough money, is discouraging. Let's use facts. And the, the other thing that is frustrating to me, as you mentioned, the sparsity that, you know, South Dakota's a sparsely state. We're a sparsely populated state. So are they pushing for consolidation? If that's what they're doing, then come out and say it because we are increasing our salaries and doing a good job. We aren't the ones that might not be increasing our salaries. It's the schools that are the rural schools that are... We aren't the ones that might not be increasing our salaries. It's the schools that are the rural schools that are having the trouble doing that and they're choosing to stay open, which is great. I'm from a rural community, but that's where it's struggling. So that's, if there, that's the focus, that's why you should come out and say that. Thank you.
If we could get copies of that.
That'd be fantastic.
Please, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the changes on legislative session update?
So moved. I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post in the side. Motion carries. Do you have a motion to move into executive session per SDCL 1-25-2, friend one? Motion second. We are moving into executive session.